Okay. I'm Kim Green and I am the current mayor of the city of Weed. And I want to thank you all for coming. We have some good information for you today from several different agencies. So I will introduce you to our city manager, Tim Rundell.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Mayor Green. And thank you all for being here on such a short notice. You know, the folks with the LAC, I think they did a good job over the last three days. But a lot of questions came. Let's hear it for the county and doing the LAC. Thank you Brian and Trish and Susan and everybody that was involved in that because that was just crucial to our citizens and getting immediate help that was desperately needed. And thank you Mayor for being here today. And also on behalf of the Weed, the city of Weed, we also have today with us Council Member Ken Palphini, Council Member Sue Tavallaro, and our Mayor Pro Tim, Stacy Green is here today too. So, big thanks to all of them for showing up and supporting this effort today. First of all, on behalf of the city of Weed, we'd like to express our condolences to those who lost loved ones. That was devastating to our community. And we also send out our condolences to the ones who lost their homes and everything they own. Nobody was exempt from this thing. It just happened so quickly. As most of you know, Stacy's sitting up here. He left his house with the clothes on his back, but he's up here. He's a leader in our community and I'm so proud that he's here today with us. I will also let you know that our organization is committed in helping all of you restore and rebuild, and I think today is where it starts. We are a full-service city. We have our fire, our police, Public Works, utility billing, and of course, our administration. We do all that for the city of Weed with only 29 full-time employees. That's a small crew. But I will tell you, I have a little bit of a military background. I'm a vet, but I left out of the military and came to work in local government over 20 years ago. And I will tell you, I've never worked in an organization like we have here where the folks that work for me have such a servant's heart. And I think it's showed over the last few days. From the moment the call went out, we had our police officers immediately, some of you that are here today, they were banging on your doors, getting you out of your homes. We had our fire department that's here today banging on your doors, getting you out of your homes as quickly as we could. We had our Public Works crew that were up there all night making sure we had enough water pressure and keeping the sewer going because when you have something that's devastating, it takes a huge hit to our infrastructure. And a big thanks to all those guys, all of our city employees that worked around the clock to make sure, even though we were all in the dark, they still made sure we had water in our sewer plant, you know, our trash service dumpsters, those types of things. And I just want to let you guys know, we're here for you. You are our customers and we are here to serve you. And so today, a little bit on the program, we're going to hear from the Siskiyou County EOS Director about the upcoming cleanup efforts for the properties that were affected by the fire. And we're also going to hear today from the CEO and COO of Roseburg Forest Products regarding the Community Restoration Fund for the initial recovery needs of the impacted residents. Now, once our speakers are finished, we're going to kind of divide and conquer on this because we've got a lot of folks here. And instead of having a bunch of Q and A going back and forth, what we want to do, because some of you have questions for the city, some of you have questions for Brian and OES about the cleanup efforts, and some of you have questions for Roseburg. So we will break out. The city will be over here. Brian will be down here in the front. Our folks from Roseburg will be over here to answer questions about the relief fund. They're going to explain a little bit how that's going to work. So that's how we're going to get the rest of the program for today. We've got a lot on the agenda and we're going to go ahead and get started. So, without further ado, here is Brian Shon, Shonone. He is our OES Director. He has been vital in making sure that we had the resources necessary for this type of emergency. He and his crew have been very helpful in working with other nonprofit organizations. Everything that you saw at the LAC was a big result of him and his crew as well as state OES folks. I, for those of you who know, I've only been here two and a half years. I come from the state of Oklahoma. We have a lot of disasters in Oklahoma. I've been through a lot of disasters in Oklahoma. I have never seen anything recover as quickly as we did here as far as the resources go. And that speaks volumes. I know we had the Bowles Fire here back in 2014. Some of these folks were on the council. Councilmember Tavallaro lost her home in the Bowles Fire. And as a result of those things, they learned a lot from what happened here in Weed back in 2014. And as a result of that, we've got the ball rolling a lot quicker and hopefully a lot more efficient than we've had in previous years. So, without further ado, I'll turn this over to Brian.
Sorry, I broke that. All right. First of all, thank you everyone for being here. So, let's talk about a couple of things. So, this was obviously a fast fire that moved through our city of Weed very quickly and into Lake Chastina very quickly. So, immediately, once we saw that happening, we knew the resource request was going to be large. We were still in the phases from previous fires. So what we have done, so real quick, if it goes by scope of what needs to happen, so we identified very clearly that from the immediate needs of this fire, that this was going to go beyond the scope of Weed being able to handle it, definitely the county being able to handle it. So we pushed it to the state for their state operations center. We immediately requested help from Cal OES and the Director of Emergency Operations, Mark Guducci, came up to discuss our needs. We put out a lot of asks really early on because the best thing you can do is ask. If they say no, they say no, but, well, we got most of it. Actually, we got all of it. So, I want to talk about the debris part of it. First off, most of you have lost your homes and that's just terrible. I hate to even say that and see that. But the recovery process has to happen in a certain and set way. So most of you have gone through the LAC. You were able to get the resources to start that building process, which is very important. Along with that is that building and that recovery process. So those two things are so important because in order to recover a community, we have to start the building blocks of, A, making sure you have the right resources to maintain your daily life. So, eating, food, shelter. We have secured shelter for the short term for 60 days as of right now, and that's very easy to do and we'll continue that as needed. So if you've been displaced, most of you have been in contact with us or in the county or sheltering, we were able to secure that. And then also secure Red Cross through immediate push and immediate needs to bring in any outside resources to support the sheltering for the 60 days. So that's short-term. And when we talk about this, we're going to talk in very distinct paths here. So we have a response phase which already happened, and now we're in our short-term recovery. So this is going to be getting needs to you. And then also, one thing that was really important to me is getting that debris clean up quick. And we got it. So we got debris Phase 1 cleanup, which is they're going to come in, make sure that the cert, so we have DTSC. So I want to give you some things and some things you'll probably be like, "I don't care about that." But DTSC, which is Department of Toxic Substance and Control, so they will be out starting tomorrow, and they were going to start marking some areas, or they're going to be marking the burn debris areas and taking care of all the hazardous waste concerns. So thinking about small amounts, they're going to be in trucks, 55-gallon drums, and they're going to identify anything that may be, that will be hazardous. So any asbestos is going to be marked off in pink. They're going to make sure that any of the propane tanks are empty. And the biggest challenge that they're going to see is some of the homes that are kerosene-fueled, they have to drain the tank. So that takes a little bit of time. Once that's done, which they're, they have two teams, and that's actually pretty unheard of. So we have two teams coming in. So from the McKinney Fire that just happened, that team is being mobilized over to come over and help. Very appreciative of the state on that. So, one thing we are going to ask is as they're in there, not to have an audience. So they're going to be in there in full hazmat suits, lot of debris flying, they're going to be making sure that they're ripping through that, making sure everything's taken care of, and they have very special needs in the sense that they're watering it down because there's going to be asbestos and some of the other toxic hazardous flying in the air. So if you're around without proper hazmat PPE, they have to slow the process. So let those guys and gals be in there doing the work. It'll be quick. They're saying by next week, they're looking to have that done. At the earliest, they're looking at Friday. That's significant. One thing to really think about in that, and why it does take a little bit longer, is they have to identify all the battery acid, also batteries, battery acid, propane tanks, any of that stuff. So think about, like we've said this before, all the stuff that was in your garage. They have to go through and make sure all that is deemed safe or marked off. So once that's done, we are going to start to see the ability to get more into that fire footprint a little bit more. And it'll be without, it'll be masks and not as hazmat intensive. So one of the things, if you still have been in there sifting, or you have not been in there sifting, let us know. We have some contacts for you. I'll be probably over there, or over here, after the Q and, for the Q and A. Come get with me. We'll talk about getting some folks in there to sift. Maybe you just don't want to get in there and sift, and that's totally understandable too. Maybe, I mean, I know, I don't like being in PPE and hazmat gear, so if you don't want to do that, let us know. We have folks that will come in and help for you, and then you can just sit there and direct them what they need, like sift there. Normally, my stuff would be here to try to recapture some of that. During the last incident with the McKinney Fire, we had some folks that were, they were adamant on not wanting to sift, and they ended up finding some diamond, or some wedding rings and some lost, just some very old artifacts that they were looking for. So it was that, it's very successful. If you haven't done it, it is something that we do recommend to get some of that, some of those heirlooms back. Let's talk about Phase 2, which is the next cleanup. And that's where it's going to take it right down to the slab, if that's the case, or if the slab has been contaminated, it would take the slab away as well. We have requested it, and we are working on it with legal right now. So the county has legal in contract with it. We haven't secured anything yet, but one of the things that we did do is we asked for Phase 2 debris cleanup because again, it takes that scope, right? It's beyond our scope from the county to handle this, so we want the state to come in and do this. One thing that we will need, we'll need ROEs, which is Right of Entries. As of right now, we only have 30 of them from the city of Weed, so we are going to need more of those. You can download those or come over and talk to me and we'll talk about getting that taken care of. So that's a right of entry. That's basically saying, yes, you can go on my property, yes, you can take away stuff that you deem hazardous. That's going to be a big portion of this. Besides that, that is where we're at with cleanup. This is moving very quick. Unfortunately, Siskiyou County has had multiple disasters in these last 18 months that I've been here. We were very well-versed on this. It's been very, really, really, and very helpful to have the state deploy to us. Normally, that doesn't happen. I asked for that and they immediately deployed a recovery team up to the Siskiyou County Emergency Operations Center. So they're embedded with us. They know our needs. They know what we can and can't do, what scope is above us. So Siskiyou County definitely would like to extend their thanks to the state, Cal OES, for their help. I know a lot of you are asking about FEMA. So we put in a declaration, but we have not received a FEMA declaration. And that is itself one of the things that I know a lot of you, a lot of you are asking about. Come talk to me. We'll talk a little bit more about it. The state steps in that, instead of FEMA, and quite honestly, they're much easier to work with. So, much easier to work with. So again, if you have any questions, please come and talk to me. Again, Siskiyou County OES, I'm your emergency manager. Our job is to ensure that we start that road to recovery and we can make this as easy as possible. So if you don't feel like your needs are being met, call us. Most of you know, I have a Siskiyou County OES Facebook page. Call me out on that Facebook page. I'm okay with that. I want, I want to make sure your needs are met on that. And I know that a lot of us, you know, the government says we're here to help, careful. But this time, as an emergency manager, I am here to help. So definitely come contact me, say, "Hey, I'm not getting this, I'm not getting that." We will find a way and we'll found a workaround. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you Brian. That's valuable information, especially the right of entry. Definitely talk to him if you haven't signed one of those to allow the crews to come up there and remove the hazardous materials from your lot. That's, you want that, I promise. You don't want to deal with that yourself. So thank you Brian for bringing that information, and it's nice that it's going to be starting tomorrow. Again, this process is moving rather quickly and that's what this community needs right now. Next, on the agenda, we have some folks from Roseburg that are going to be addressing today. They're going to be talking about the Community Restoration Fund for the initial recovery needs of those directly impacted by the fire. So, we are very fortunate today to have them, and I will tell you, when I got the call a couple of days ago about the fund that they've set up, quite honestly, my jaw hit the ground because I thought, this is what this community needs right now. Because we've got folks sitting in here right now that are living in, you know, motels, or living with their brothers, or living with their sisters. I don't know about you, but I couldn't stand to live with my brothers or sisters. But anyway, I can only stick about two days with my mom, I think. So anyway, but it's great that they're here. They're going to talk about some of those, some of those, the programs and how it's going to work. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Roseburg Forest Products CEO, Grady Mulberry.
Well, thank you Mayor Green. Thank you City Manager Rundell. And thanks Brian, appreciate your support. And to Mayor Pro Tim, Stacy coming out and the other, the other city councils coming out. And I want to thank all of you for giving us an opportunity to talk to you here today. You know, this is, you know, just to have the opportunity to participate in your town hall, is it, is, we're just, we're just fortunate that you're allowing us to do that. Again, my name is Grady Mulberry. I'm the President and CEO of Roseburg Forest Products. And as I think some of you may know, Roseburg has a longstanding role in the Weed community. You know, we've operated down here for near 40 years, and we've had several of our team members and relatives of them, and children have gone through our facility over here, worked for us over the years. You know, we've been involved with many vendors in the local area and the region, and we've, you know, we've, we've employed a lot of your friends and, you know, we know you're our team members and our neighbors, and, you know, that's, that's really why we've, we want to be down here today is to really talk about, you're going to hear some detail about our, our Community Relief Fund. We want to get started as quickly as we can and the mechanisms around that. I would also tell you that, you know, I've been here with you in this room before, and we're again here today to help you, help the community rebuild. And that dates back, I remember being here in the, in the same room with the community after the 2014 Bowles Fire. And I think, I think the thing to, you know, realize with, with this tragic event, just like that, we as Roseburg, we were committed to helping to get the community back up and going. And we, we spent a lot of time and resources and had a strong commitment to do that, and we're in the same position today. You know, and I, and I think, Roseburg is here for you. I'm here for you, and I think that's important, very important thing for you all to understand. You know, we, you know, we're devastated by the tragic loss of life. All of you have lost properties, memorabilia, et cetera, pets, et cetera, et cetera. We had an opportunity to drive around and see, see the areas today, you know, and it's, it's incredibly devastating. I mean, it just is. I mean, to see, to see basically housing structures and all that's left is foundations. I mean, it's, it's just extremely, extremely devastating to see. You know, to think about all of those memories, I think about my own family, all those memories of kids and pictures and, you know, you can't get those back, you know, those memorabilia, those heirlooms you wanted to hand down. And again, it's just, it's just very, very tragic, very tragic. We get that, and I get that, and you know, that's, that's why we want to help as much as we can, as quickly as we can, where we can help, to get this Community Relief Fund up and going. And in a moment here, I'm going to introduce a gentleman that works for our company that's going to give you some of the mechanics of that, that's going to help you kind of understand how to take advantage of that as quickly as you possibly can because you're going to have the opportunity to do that in very quick fashion. But we're committed to the community, we as Roseburg. And, you know, I'm here to tell you that. And this is only step one. This is a long process, you know, and, and I know it's going to be extremely hard, arduous, frustrating for all of you that have to go through this on the ground. And we, we know it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of resources to help rebuild, but we are here to help rebuild. And I think that's the, that's really the main message I want to, I want to, I want to give you here. You know, this, this community has responded to tremendous adversities in the past and has always persevered. And, you know, we believe you're going to do that again, and we want to assist where we can help to do that. And I think that's, that's a really important thing I wanted to point out to you. And again, thank you for allowing us to speak here today, to get this thing kick-started. You know, I do, I do want to say before I turn it over to my cohort here that, you know, on behalf of Roseburg Forest Products, I want you to know, all of our thoughts and prayers are with you and your families and your friends. And I really do mean that from the bottom of my heart. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stuart Gray, our Chief Operating Officer, and he's going to go through more of the mechanics around the relief fund and how to, how that's going to start. Thank you.
Thank you Grady, and thank you to Mayor Green, Manager Rundell. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here, as Grady said. You're surrounded by great people. You know, you have great leadership. You have a spirit of resilience in this community that resonates with us, with our core values. And we're part of this community, as Grady said, right? For over 40 years, Roseburg Forest Products has been part of this community, and we intend to be here for you during this time, just like we have been in the past. I have some specifics that I want to cover, but, you know, let me start with maybe a comment or two about driving through the community this morning and just seeing the, you know, neighborhoods decimated, homes down to the foundation, cars destroyed, you know, everything in the yard gone. It's, it really tugs at your heartstrings. We hurt for you. We're hurting with you, and that's part of why we're here, to try to make sure that you have what you need in order to really start the recovery process. I'll reiterate that, you know, we're devastated along with you and we want to be part of the solution. That's really why we're here, first and foremost. You know, I, I'm so impressed with really the first responders that you have, and I want to express our gratitude to them, to the county, and to your firefighters and the state agencies that swooped in to help. It's amazing to hear, you know, watching the Cal Fire updates and to, to see the resources that they brought to bear upon this catastrophe and how that reined in the situation. I can only imagine what this might have been but for them. You know, to be in the place they were and to contain this fire really at that 4,000-acre mark and stop it. Kudos to them, and we thank them from the bottom of our hearts. Well, I want to thank you. I've heard stories of neighbors helping each other, saving each other from this quickly advancing fire. Touring it this morning, that's one of the things that stood out to me is just how, how quickly and narrowly that path provided, right? It burned. It went from pretty much our location and just burned north and gradually spread out. But it's just incredible to see the power of Mother Nature as it carries a fire from where it started on our grounds. And that's, that's part of what I want to talk about is, is a little bit of, about the cause. I, we can't, we've been asked specifically by Cal Fire not to discuss the investigation, but we believe it is clear that it started at that, that building, and the storage shed, and it spread from there. We do not know exactly how it started. We haven't been given access to the building yet to begin our own investigation, and of course, the state's investigation is still pending. So we all await with bated breath on, on the outcome of that, right? And specifically, we know over time, the cause will become clearer, and that will help with the situation, particularly as you think about insurance and other things that come to bear with this. Insurers were not going to get involved in this situation until that investigation is clear. That's part of why we're here to establish this relief fund, is because you need help now, and we realize that. We see that we're here to provide help now. I will say that portions of our mill, you know, that shed as well as a couple of other operating areas are roped off. And because of that, we're not in a place where we can resume operations for now. So we have our team members at work. They're, they're welcome to come in. We had them back at work, helping with maintenance and housekeeping and just general work around the plant. But our operations will not restart until we get to a point where the facility is fully turned back over to us, and also to a point where we are comfortable that where safety is the top priority to ensure that the risk that may have caused this does not occur again. So we will keep you posted along with our team members as that develops, but for now, we await for the facility to be turned back over to us. You know, again, I'd say with respect to, to insurance, you know, insurers are going to expect the investigation to come to a conclusion, right? And we'll be with them along that, and that will, that conclusion will largely dictate to the extent that they participate. It does not dictate the extent to which we participate, which is again, why we have established this Community Relief Fund. $50 million to help put you guys back on your feet and to start the restoration process. The claims process, I want to go through a little bit of detail on that. It's going to start tomorrow morning. So you've seen, you probably have the flyer, right? 9:00 AM tomorrow at the Weed Community Center. We will have folks on the ground to, first and foremost, hear your immediate needs, right? Come to that. Please come. Let us help you. Be there. Help us understand your immediate needs for, for shelter, housing, especially shelter and housing beyond what the county is talking about, beyond that 60 days. That's something that we can address. Clothing, food, water, transportation, you know? If you've lost a car, come, talk to us. Medical care and supplies, daycare, adult care, you know, lost income, lost business profit, you name it. If you have immediate needs, we want you to come to the facility to help us understand that so that when you leave, you're walking out with money in your hands. That's the purpose of the relief fund, so that you receive immediate care for your immediate needs. You can also, and we'll be set up to do this, is to start collecting information about longer-term needs, rebuilding, property loss, you know, vehicles, et cetera. So bring in information that you have. We'll address immediate needs out of the gate with you leaving with money in your hands, like I said. And then second, we'll start to collect the information about your other losses. It's a hard situation, you know, even just speaking to this up here. You can tell I'm a little emotional because I feel part of that pain that you feel. Obviously, it's not the same, but a portion of it, it almost brings me to tears, really, and I'm being sincere about that. I hope that you will take us up on this relief fund and come and participate in it and allow us to help you. and come and participate in it and allow us to help you. As we think about the, the relief fund, we'll, we will have more answers here. We have Pete Hillen over here in the corner and Bob McAvoy, who's with one of our partners. He'll be down here to help answer some questions about the process. And those folks are going to be here to, to really help this, this relief fund get off the ground starting tomorrow morning. So, I'll close with that, with a thank you to you for being here first and foremost, for being our neighbors, for allowing us to be part of your community. And, and in particular, again, a thank you to the city and county officials who are supporting you in this crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grady. And thank you, Stuart. And, you know, we are very, like I said, very fortunate. We're very blessed to have somebody like Roseburg in the community that has stepped up. They're not out there hiding in the shadows trying to avoid any of this. They're here, and, and which I think is, is a tremendous asset to the community, and that speaks volumes for what they think. I mean, some of the, some of you here today are employees of Roseburg, and you suffered losses as well. You, you, you lived in the neighborhood that was decimated by the fire. And so, here's what I'm going to share with everybody. This will be, it's recorded right now. It's going to be on our city website tomorrow. They're going to try real hard to get it up for replay tomorrow. And then we're going to blast it all over social media to get the word out. And what I'm getting ready to say is probably going to be kind of sensitive, so bear with me. And I'm, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful. But, I've shook a lot of hands in this room of folks that lost their homes, folks that lost their cars, folks that lost everything, folks that lost family members. And what I would ask, if you did not directly get impacted from this, please be respectful of these folks and allow them to get first in line. Agree? I'm not, I'm not saying that some of us didn't experience, you know, you know, if your power went out. We all know we, we lost, you know, the meat in the fridge. And these guys will make fun of me because there's no meat in my fridge. I'm a vegetarian, so. I got one other vegetarian here. All right. So, but I really, I really do, it, it, if your losses are minimal, please, these guys aren't going to just be here tomorrow. Please don't come in and clog up the line first thing in the morning and try to get what was replaced in your freezer. Please allow these folks that have had incredible losses. I mean, if you can't drive through that neighborhood and see what was done and have that hit your heart and just say, "You know what? I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bother these folks. I'm gonna let these folks that need it up there first." So, anyway, the way this is going to be done here in a few minutes, we're getting ready to do our, our breakout session. So, and just to let everybody know how this is going to work is we're going to have, our city folks are going to be over here. If you have questions, you know, feel free to direct them to us. Brian, I'm going to ask from Brian from OES, some of you have asked about the cleanup efforts. Brian's going to be over here. And we're going to have the, the Roseburg team over here. Pete is going to be the, Pete, will you raise your hand? See that guy right there? He's got all the information that you need right there. He's got the flyers with all the information on the who, how, and when, and where that's going to take place. So, again, let's, let's, let's be respectful. And I, I, I certainly am in this for the, the long haul. And I certainly think that this community, again, as has been mentioned over and over again, we are resilient. We are going to bounce back. We did it with the Bowles fire. And by gosh, we're going to do it with the mills, the mill fire and anything else that hits this town because we're strong. We're strong people. I come from a blue collar family. My dad was a roofer. I'm sorry, he died almost a year ago right now. So, it's been a rough, a rough week. And, thank you. My mom was a waitress. So, I come from blue collar roots. I know what it feels like to live paycheck to paycheck and not to know where that next meal comes from. And I can't imagine as a child having to go through what some of you are going through. So, again, thank you, Brian, for being here. Thank you, Roseburg, for, for stepping up to the plate. And thank you to our first responders. And thank you to the city crews that have kept the water going and everything else going. Thank you. And this concludes our program. And be safe.